Chairman of this committee, we also have Shay Nagerschek and Paul Rotello, which are part of this committee. We also have with us Dina Diorio, Finance Director, Les Pinter, Corporation Counsel. We have Dr. Schmader, President of Westcon. We also have Beth Amiot from Westcon. Beth, what's your title?
Vice President for Finance and Administration.
Thank you. We have Liz Durkin-Salvador. She's the current Executive Director of the Charles Ives Center and Steve Greenberg, who's on the Board of Directors of the Ives Center. We also have...
Bob Parker, I'm the Chairman of the Board at the Ives Center.
Bob, nice to meet you. And we have Mayor Saracino, Councilperson Ex officio. The charge of this committee is to consider an ordinance for the creation of the Charles Ives Authority for the Performing Arts. And I think we'll start by letting the Mayor present what the proposal is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think council members have in front of them a copy of the draft proposal that we've been working on. Take a step back from this proposal for a second to build a little history here. All of us probably in the room, I went time rather, attended events at the Ives Center. We've been very impressed with the facility and performances over the last several years. Due to a lot of factors, the Ives Center has been struggling with some issues, but last year had a very profitable year as it relates to the performances we have. The problem is, is we've got some other challenges that really relate back three or four years ago. And in discussions with the Ives Board and with Dr. Schmader and a whole host of people, we thought now would be an opportune time to come in and work closely with the Ives Board and create a new entity, this authority that we have proposed in front of you. And the purpose would be which to create a strategic partnership between the City of Danbury and Western Connecticut State University in offering a true performing arts venue for the residents of the city and the greater Danbury area. Over the years, the Ives Center has attracted national acts and we would like to expand some of the programming to include some of our more community-oriented events along with various festivals and other kinds of things that are possible on the grounds. We came up with a concept of the idea of the Authority. I brought it to our Director of Finance and asked Dina to sit down and develop a strategic plan and she's done that, which is a document you see in front of you. She's done a terrific job at it. And we then met with Dr. Schmader and Beth Amiot over at Westcon and put the proposal in front of them and talked about how best we can create a Authority as a performing arts center that in some ways will give a little bit of a nod to Charles Ives, the original mission of the Board. But also a look to stabilize the facility and to expand and eventually develop a capital program for capital improvements and all those other things that need to be developed out there. The City of Danbury has authorities already in existence. There's one for the Terre Wall Park Authority. There's one for the Richter Park Authority. Both of those entities do eligibility to generate revenue. Richter Park has been basically self-sufficient over the last two dozen years. There's some ups and downs in their budgeting, but generally self-sufficient. And the Terre Wall Park Authority represents a significant investment by the city each and every year. It does not act break even in order to remotely come close to doing that. And so in doing this, we created the Charles Ives Center Authority, which Mr. Diorio had a big hand in creating, a shared vision and values. And just to give you some of the highlights of the proposal that you see in here, we speak to things like collaborative programming between Westcon and to, and the City of Danbury and the new Authority Board. We see the integration of this facility with the planned Center for the Performing Arts. In other words, give an outdoor venue to Westcon's planned building, the $84 million state-of-the-art building, the planned building there. In addition to that, we see a collaboration with Westcon's Business Department in terms of business planning and in terms of marketing. We also see collaboration with Westcon's grants, writing abilities that they have and utilizing some of their assets and through access grants, state, federal grants and private foundation grants that might be available to keep the facility, running at the active facility. We also look at cashing in on the rich, and the rich resources of the students that attend Western, in the sense of having them be participants and developing the webpage and assisting in the marketing promotion of this facility. So we're looking at a project and a proposal that's a true town-gown relationship. The first one, I think really that Westcon and the city can say, this is our baby together. We asked Westcon to provide for us a five-year lease for the site, for the Authority. That lease for now, takes generally about 18 months of general lease through the state system by ignoring all the various entities that you need to stop there. So next year, we would operate on their standard facilities use agreement, the Authority would, which is what they operate on now. But by having a permanent lease settle would certainly help us in terms of expanding the scope of the activities that are available there and the kinds of activities that are available there and the timing. And while that, of course, has to be contingent with Westcon's scheduling and their events there, obviously they have a mission with the rest of their students. And so we would work as a partner with them to ensure that the academic integrity of the university is protected and the student life is protected, but also that we can use the facility in a much different way than what there's been thought of using before. There are some examples of that in the proposal that you see in here. WCSU has also agreed to, as I mentioned earlier, help us with the ticketing system, which they have currently, and I know that other folks in our system are better, but they currently are not using Western's ticketing system. Some maintenance issues with lawn mowing and snow removal. In addition to that, being able to access coaching with the grants at the Department of Westcon. Obviously, the Executive Director would have to write the grants for the Authority, but to have that input, another set of eyes to look at the application would be certainly of great help in doing that. In addition to that, we think that we have worked out a financial workout and the concept would be that the Authority would purchase from the current Ives Board the assets, which include things like the chairs, their equipment, the sound equipment that they have, their database of over 31,000 names, which is credit card, the domain name, the website, a whole host of assets that they have. And in doing so, purchasing that, this new entity, would then go out and begin developing and marketing in 2007. To ensure there's participation with Westcon, we've asked that there be appointments by both Dr. Schmader and myself to the Board. Dr. Schmader, Westcon will appoint three members to the Authority Board, the City will appoint six. Authorities, you are not required to live in the City of Danbury, so that opens up the scope of who we can appoint to that Board particularly as it relates to fundraising because the Authority Board is going to have to go out and fundraise. It won't stand to be able to report without them still having that commitment to generating revenue through fundraising. In fact, the telethon is coming up, phone-a-thon is coming up two weeks from next week, I believe. So that has to continue to go on even with this new Authority Board. There's still going to have to be a phone-up there that raise money from our corporations and private individuals that are committed to this facility. So we're excited about it. We think it will really provide an arts initiative for the city. And at the end of the day, if I can wrap this up, Danbury does not have an arts initiative of its own, and even this one is in partnership, but it's the first step to us really having our own sort of cultural slash arts initiative that we have a significant amount of control over. And I think that that alone merits worthy consideration by this council in the sense that for the first time, we can have a venue that frankly, in a lot of ways, we can say is a Danbury asset along with a Westcon asset. So I know that I can speak for Dr. Schmader when I say we're both very excited about the potential possibility of this.
Thank you, Mayor Bowden. It appears that much thought and research has gone into this. My, I just have one question to start here. Who and why or how did this idea first come to fruition that we needed this to happen or that the Ives Center as it is now wouldn't make it?
Well, I wouldn't say it was a case of the Ives Center not making it. I think, again, last year was actually a pretty productive and profitable year. I think the problem is, is that over a series of years, we've developed some challenges there and that's really where it's come to a head. And I've had discussions with Bob, Steve Greenberg in here, with Dr. Schmader, and a whole host of folks about the potential that we have there and about how the city can help play a role in receiving that or gaining that potential. I came up with the idea of the Authority. Ms. Diorio came up with the operating plan and with the concept of marrying up Westcon to this process. So it's been kind of a collaborative effort. And then we approached Dr. Schmader and his staff and they certainly thought that it was an exciting potential. And obviously, we've had with the Ives Board to present our thoughts to them and they certainly, I think I can speak for the Board saying they were excited by this potential as well.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. How are we going to work this? First, I'll open it up to committee members, which is Councilman Nagerschek and then Councilman Rotello and then any other input or questions from the rest of the people here. So Shay, do you have any questions?
Just out of curiosity, on this other, on page six, probably through the chair to the Councilperson. So the land, is that, is it leased?
Well, the land is actually owned by the State of Connecticut, so that they're showing it on the ballot. The Ives Center shows it on the ballot sheet. They also have an acre parcel that they own outright, which is actually part of the park that the Ives Center actually owns.
So it's really, it's just for balance sheet purposes?
Well, the land, one acre parcel of land is that only, maybe one of their assets.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, Councilman Rotello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To begin with, I have, my personal belief is that the Ives Center is a powerful asset for the City of Danbury and that we're lucky to have it, to begin with. And we've been lucky that people have been supporting it for the past 25 years or so. I also note in the financial statements that the Ives Center is doing okay. It's not totally there, but I mean, a couple of years ago, they were in danger of actually going out of business. You've got a notation here as a ongoing concern for fiscal year, I think 2003, but the following year, they actually paid down some debt. So they've, they've been coming back. I think also the lease is a critical part of their potential success or failure. If we can expand that lease from a year to five, I've spoken to people in the community who would consider, who have donated previously and would also consider donating in the future if, if the Ives Center looks like it's going to be more established. I'm not completely convinced it needs to be under the umbrella of both the city and the state, but I do think the Ives Center needs to survive. And if this is something that we can do that will help it survive without exhausting funds of the city, and that's something that we need to explore, I think also, is how much will this actually cost the city to purchase the assets? I think I saw a figure of about $75,000, which is, as far as I'm concerned, a bargain. But if it turns out that, I mean, there's been talk about putting a roof on it, that's always been a problem with the weather, that they've lost a lot of dates from raining. And I think capital improvements at some point will improve doming it or roofing it, the tanglewoodization of the Ives Center bathroom facilities. And we're looking at some serious funds. If the potential Board is convinced that through private fundraising, that they can make this work, I will defer to them. I think it's a good idea on balance. I do have some financial concerns and also through the Chair, through the Corporation Counsel, I would like to explore the actual title of the property. I know that when June Goodman and El Agresso got this thing going in the '70s, that the land was deeded from the state, but there seems to be some question as to whether the Authority to control the land comes from Westcon or it comes from Hartford. I would like to, if perhaps we could, we could find the bottom line on that because I think that, again, goes to the lease. But that's all that I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
I just want to echo Councilman Rotello's comment in the sense, for capital improvements, one of the benefits of having an Authority established by the Connecticut General Statutes will allow the Authority to go out and bond capital improvements versus the city doing that. So in essence, we're, we're not assuming the potential liability of, you know, tanglewoodization or whatever term you use, which is a good point. There's going to have to be some work done there. That's going to be up to the Authority to do that and to generate a kind of revenue that will support some level of borrowing. That, that won't happen in the near future. That's a long-term project that'll have to come off the ground, but then it'll have to be a lot of strategic planning by the Authority, just like Richter Park right now is doing a master plan, just like Terre Wall Park has done a master plan. Ives has a master plan, but I think it needs to be updated, fleshed out. And then there's got to be an implementation piece to that, which the new Authority will have to go through and find out what's doable at this time. We're just going to have to defer until they regain and hold their financial stability.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have another question. Maybe, Mayor, this is directed to you. Can you explain how the Authority or an Authority like the Terre Wall Park Authority, the Richter Park Authority, will be different or autonomous from the current Board of Directors that the Ives Center has now? How will anything be different from the way it is now?
Well, the, as I mentioned earlier, we have three separate authorities within our city. We have the Richter Park Authority, the Terre Wall Park Authority, and the Danbury Park Authority. Each of those are, their powers are derived through Section 7-130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which permits us to create these authorities to manage public facilities in the city. The difference is right now, we have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit board, all volunteer board, that's along with the Executive Director of the Center, that basically manages and operates the facility. In this case, the Authority would then take over the global direction of the park, obviously with a lot of consultation from Westcon and from a whole host of individuals. But the difference primarily being is that this would be appointed position accountable to both myself and accountable to the President of the University to ensure that the park continues to operate the way it's been operating, to ensure that there are plans, strategic plans in there, and also to be able to utilize the stamp of approval fee role of the City of Danbury and Westcon on this facility. That alone is worth, I think, a significant amount of goodwill, particularly when it looks to corporate donors and folks that are looking to, as Paul mentioned, write those checks. This is something that they really want to see to preserve this ability in the future.
Thank you. And now I want to open it up a little bit and ask for different members of this group that are here tonight, if they have any additional comments. And Dina, or Director of Finance, Dina Diorio, or else, that would be?
I just want to sort of go back to something that Paul had mentioned in terms of the financial viability of the Authority going forward. I think, I think the expectation should be early on that there's going to be some growing pains. I think it's going to be a new board, they're going to have to create new bylaws, they're going to have to sort of figure out what they're doing. And I don't, although we would hope that they would be able to make money, you know, right out of the box. I think there's going to be a bit of a transition. I think that we should expect that as we go forward. So I don't want there to be an expectation of this because we're creating the Authority that there's going to be cash flow and then that we need to be mindful that there is going to be some startup.
I mean, the, Mr. Chairman, the, the money that the Authorities generate go back into the Authority at the end of the statute. They don't bring into the city's general fund. And at the end of the year, if there are any unspent funds in the Authority, they're required to return them back to the city. But I think the reality is that they're going to have plenty of capital improvement work that they have to do, any, you know, unspent dollars, and they'll quickly clawing right back to their facility, just like Richter Park does. Richter Park doesn't send any money back to the city. They continue to upgrade and update the facility with the dollars they generally have to go through.
Any further?
I think maybe we'll ask the current Executive Director, Liz Durkin-Salvador, if you have any comments and if you think this is a good idea? I think it is a good idea. Thank you. I think that bringing the city together along with the university to become real partners and how we utilize the park, which in my opinion has been underutilized since the Ives currently is allowed to use it for about 16 weekends every year. And during the off period, Westcon has the right to use it, but doesn't often do that during the winter or spring. Summer's the most popular month, so, or the time of year. So I think that by expanding the lease and including activities that are outside of the summer concert series is going to benefit all of the residents of the greater Danbury area and certainly the city and the university. So I'm, I'm all for this proposal and happy to be a part of the transition.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Schmader, do you have anything to add?
Well, I would echo what's been said, what's been said already. I think this allows both the university and the city and the, and the Ives Board to utilize this really very nice and even promising facility more than we have been. And I think that's, that's, that's really important. I think it's also kind of a model of town-gown partnership that's really serving, serving the best interests of the community. You know, we've been, we've been very pleased to work with the current Ives Board and we don't want that to, that to stop, but I think that this just takes it to a different sort of, sort of level of opportunity, really. And that's what's really attractive to, to us. We can do more things because, you know, Westcon is the arts university of CSU. We're going to be putting our, our performing arts center up there where, you know, we, it's something that we're very serious about and in partnership with the city, we could have another venue up there. I think by pooling our resources and efforts, we could make something really special. And eventually get to a tanglewoodization kind of.
Are there any other questions from committee members? Anyone else have anything to add? Beth, Councilman Chiesi?
With the Chair, I'll get to any further questions. Some information that we gave you questions before this evening and yet we have not yet received them. On one of them, we have the current copy of the bylaws. I think there's a problem obtaining those. I think they're important because in those bylaws will have whether or not the Ives Center can actually sell the assets to the city without, without knowing that.
Mr. Chairman, just to interrupt. The Ives Board, that would be a resolution supporting this plan, saying that they...
Let's see that. I haven't seen any of that. I haven't seen any bylaws, anything to, that's one. I think it was also mentioned this evening about the lease. I know that lease is expiring December of '06, I believe, except for a renewal. What are the renewal clauses? What are the restrictions in that lease? And would those restrictions still apply to the new Authority or would that Authority have to negotiate a new lease with the state of Connecticut?
In terms of use of the facility for the upcoming year, the intention is to enter into a simpler type of arrangement, which is referred to as a facilities use agreement by the state. And it's a form of entering into an arrangement with predefined terms by the Attorney General's Office, which is automatically approved. And those tend to be one-year maximum duration. So our intention is to enter into such an arrangement while we pursue the longer-term lease. And we've already been in conversation with the State's Attorney General's Office about using that approach and they're willing to work with us on that.
And that lease would be, Anthony, so to speak?
It would be with the new Authority.
So the new Authority would be in negotiations, not the current?
With the lease. The new, the new Authority would be in negotiations with the lease. If the Authority doesn't exist yet, there's ability to enter into a much shorter-term facilities use contract. So that could be entered into with whatever party is available to sign it, whether it's the Authority or the House Board.
But again, so many restrictions in the current lease, it's so many dates, correct? 16 dates?
The dates are always negotiated as part of the agreement.
Who's negotiating them? Why is there such a restriction? Who's that restriction for?
The university needs to get, make available dates that work within the context of our academic mission. And so we do need to be mindful, there are classes being taught on the Westside Campus Center, there are athletic competitions and so on. So we always work very collaboratively to try to make available the dates that the Ives Group has needed while still maintaining our academic focus.
I've got a lot of questions.
Okay. We're going to give everybody a chance. Dr. Parker, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think I could probably address some of the, because Bob Parker, I'm the Chairman, the existing Chairman of the Board. A lot of your questions regarding lease, and this is one of the reasons, I think, that I would support this new Authority is in negotiating a short-term lease, there's, there's major obstacles. Number one, there's the ability to go out and sell the Ives as an ongoing concern. Examples being, we've had two major title sponsors over the historical period of time, one being Duracell and one being Audi Corporation. When we don't have that ongoing long-term lease, it's hard to sell. But at the same time, there's, there's, being negotiating with Western Connecticut State University, there's oftentimes a change in administration. Dr. Schmader's administration has been very forthcoming in the sitting down and negotiating the ability to, to make the park available. For the first time ever, we've had shows mid-week, which make the Center much more viable. So I think that, I guess my comment here is that as a Councilmember and also a city resident, that it's, this administration at Western Connecticut is certainly an administration that's willing to sit down and address these concerns, and you as, as a Councilmember as well as many citizens of the great city of Danbury have, to put together something that does work on the long ti, long term. And I think your questions are right on point and hopefully have given you a little bit of guidance or help as to, you know, some of the problems we've had and I think how they can be addressed in the future. Thank you.
So, Mr. Parker, it seems like there's some hurdles to overcome, but they're easily overcome, in your opinion, in the near future?
I just address, and in due respect to Mr. Chiesi, we're not limited to 16 dates. The whole point of this is that the Authority will negotiate in the lease, a period of time of which the Authority will lease the property and then work with Westcon to carve out the times needed for students, activities, for graduations, whatever issue might be going on there. What we have now in the current situation with the current Board is there's only a certain amount of time that the Board can get and that has to be, the dates have to be given. Any other date, the property is pretty much open to be used by Westcon for whatever they want to do with it. And they, essentially, the arrangement will stay the same, but at least there'll be a firmer lease in place for the Authority. And the old Board will cease to exist. So having the bylaws for the old Board really doesn't make a, I'm not quite sure what value they would have in making deliveries in the, in the future because they're, they're not in existence once the Authority's created. That's the whole point, is that they're going to migrate, you know, everybody's going to migrate over to new Authority. Obviously, the Board members have mostly made a decision that they're going to back away a little bit from the Ives at this point and let a new group in and sort of take over. But, you know, just so we're clear here, the old Ives Board will not exist in a, in the way it exists now. It's not part of the equation. The Authority now would be running the, the facility. Just want to make sure we're clear.
Can I follow up?
Go ahead, Beth. One question for now, Ben, here. Follow-up from the Mayor's?
He gets a follow-up question of my statement.
Of your statement, not my official question. So the way I understand it, again, I'm not against the whole process, it's going to make sure that everything is on the table so we can discuss it. So the old Ives Board will not dissolve. It will continue?
No, it will dissolve.
It will dissolve. So the Ives Center for the Arts will dissolve?
That, that is correct. I mean, there'll be a...
Dissolution?
Right. The Mayor, it'll take a little bit of a period of time. As you understand, we're a not-for-profit corporation of 501(c)(3), so we have certain fiduciary responsibilities in order to shut that down, but we would certainly be relinquishing all rights and controls to the assets to this new partnership.
So you'd be selling the assets?
Correct.
But that's not our, you know, Mr. Chairman, that's not our purview, the city's purview, whether or not they dissolve or not.
Right. Yeah, right. We could, I mean, we could have board meeting every month if we so chose, but for what purpose we would have it.
It's a political organization.
Right.
Can I ask my official question?
Sure. Go ahead, Beth. I'll, two more questions.
Me?
Yes.
These would be financial questions, so it might be a long question. The first question is price. I haven't heard a price to purchase the assets.
$75,000.
And that would cover what?
Furniture, fixture and equipment. $32,000. We'll show this on the back page of the proposal. In addition, we would buy the name, the logo.
We didn't get any of those terms.
Furniture, fixture and equipment, the domain name, the logo, the website and the database of 31,000 names.
And again, I mean, my financial question pertains to September 2005. I have not gotten the financial data for September 2006, which they should be available shortly.
It should be available shortly.
Can I have a copy as well? And my question is, hopefully, it's an easy question, and I'm going to give some numbers. Back in 2001, the Ives Center basically broke even. And again, I took out that to give us a figure of debt revenue. In 2002, you lost $31,000. In 2003, you lost $27,000. In 2004, you lost $110,000. In September 2005, for one, for some reason, I really don't understand, you made $80,000. So congratulations on that. Hopefully, 2006 continues that same. But now, when I... But now, when I was doing my analysis, I think the performance is where the bulk of this is. But in all those years, if you take the total income from the performances to ticket sales and the expenses for those performances, you've lost a million dollars. So basically, the ticket sales don't make up for the revenue, I mean, for the expenses. So therefore, you have to go for sponsorships. And so the new authority will do that as well. But my question is, what would be the main difference between this authority and your board? What will be, what will stop these losses from occurring year after year? Because it's the same concept. Everything's going to be basically the same except for a new authority. I mean, what's, what's going to change?
Go ahead. It was a long question, so I'll try to remember all the component parts. Let's go back to the confusion of September of '05. The organization changed its physical year-end to better reflect its operation. We used to be a calendar year.
December '02.
I'm sorry.
December 2002. That can be changed.
Okay. My apologies. Right. 2002. We changed the year-end to better reflect the operation, the fact that our season theoretically ends right around Labor Day. Sometimes there's some shows in September, but it lets it. The, the ticket revenue, in this business, be it at the Ives Center or Giant Stadium with a large show, the Rolling Stones, ticket revenue never will meet the cost of the artists and the production. It doesn't balance out, and that's one of the struggles in this business. The biggest opportunities to make money for an organization in the musical business, as we've learned, are that there's three component parts. One, in concessions. Two, in merchandising. And three, in parking. One of the biggest changes that the Ives has made, which drastically impacts on the bottom line, is this year, for the first time, the organization prohibited patrons bringing alcoholic beverages onto site. In the past, we've always allowed patrons to bring their own alcohol onto site. This year, that will contribute approximately $25,000 to $30,000 to the bottom line of the organization's in the form of a net profit. That, that change in itself is a substantial change on an ongoing basis to the operation. I think that you're, if you're trying to balance revenue with ticket, or the concert costs with the ticket revenue, it will never balance in this organization or any organization moving forward. I don't know if I answered the question.
One more question? Mr. Doria?
I think one of the things that we should also point out, I think, and you guys can certainly hear me from now, but one of the struggles with this year-to-year lease that they've had, it really prohibited their ability to raise money. Now, I looked at those numbers too, and if you look over historical, you can see that the fundraising dollar, especially last year, really came down. I think that was because there was some uncertainty as about whether or not they were going to have another year agreement with WestCon. And I think this scenario with a five-year lease allows the organization to get the stability it needs, to raise the money it needs going forward, to offset some of those operating losses that you see in the financial statements. And I think that's really the big difference that you'll see going forward that you didn't see prior.
Ben, I'll ask you one more question.
The rise is short. One more question, just here. Who deals with the operations? Who deals with the personnel? Apparently, if there is an authority and they hire a full-time executive director, as you are now, would that person be considered a city employee under the city benefits plan and pension, although they have their own separate pension, health insurance costs as well, because, I mean, that'll be a big, big number. That's not already in these numbers now. If you are considered a city employee and city benefits, so that's...
Well, I mean, just explain how we work with our other authorities here. The employees and our other authorities are not city employees. They work for the authority and they're paid through authority dollars. In terms of health insurance, we let those authorities purchase health insurance through the city because they get a better rate than if they went to purchase it on their own. But it's not, it's not free to them. They have to buy it. So there's really no additional expense that would come from the, on the city side by creating this authority and having those, those people work there.
Again, they'll be part of the city pension as well?
No, they don't. They don't participate in the energy.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody else here? Okay. The, the Ives Center, and I think this is why we're here, is too important an organization and a performing arts center to let anything but good happen to it. And I think this is why we're here. We've had some great ideas from the mayor, Dr. Schmader, our director of finance, and others in the existing board. And I think that's a good thing. Danbury needs the performing arts, and this center has shown itself to be worthy, and hopefully, with this new authority, will continue that way. Shay?
Well, that being said, I would like to recommend that the common council adopt this ordinance as presented, and it's next to be read in discussion, subject to the public here.
That a motion? Discussion?
I would like to add a non-credicial amendment, that we have Corporation Council to support the land deal with the state. I'd like a little bit more information on who exactly ultimately will control that piece of property. Will the authority be able to deal directly with Hartford or will they, again, have to go through WestCon?
I believe that's part of what will happen anyway, but I'll let the mayor respond to that.
Well, we've already done a lot of preliminary research on that. In fact, I've interviewed Mayor Eric Lenz and Bob and a bunch of people that have historical knowledge, or even approached Phil Goodman to see if he's had any information in his possession. Basically, nobody has anything official. We all know the story of how that property was acquired. And historically speaking, there was a movement by WestCon in the mid-'80s or so to kind of transition that property over into the WestCon portfolio, if you will. And I think there were a lot of legendary discussions between Steven Feldman and Mayor Dyer and a bunch of folks about the Charles Ives Center and exactly what the mission would be. So at this point, you know, we'll continue to research this, and if we can find anything, we will. We've even contacted the archives of Governor Grasso to see if she's got any communication from Jim Goodman or anything. But it's really slep, you know, really difficult sledding, and there's not a lot out there. So we'll continue to do that. I don't know if we need to amend the ordinance to do that. I think we can pretty much take, we think it's a value to have that information as well.
If I may, I'm not sure we actually need to amend the ordinance, but it's one more thing that could give them a leg up if they, if the new authority is, if the old authority is dissolved, the new authority is created, with a clearer picture in mind about, about the ultimate status of the property. So I think that I would like to appreciate if the city could keep working.
Okay. We'll leave that amendment on the table, and is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Or adjourned?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Sorry, folks.